Today, February 24th, just about 7:00 PM in beautiful Marion, Kansas for the Marion City Council Meeting. Justin, thank you for coming.
Hey.
I'm Billy Crown. I'm one of the folks who saw your video online.
Billy Crown?
Yep.
Billy Crown, hey, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, we were wanting to meet you.
Me too.
We wanted to meet you, so we're glad that we're here to meet.
Cool. Maybe get some coffee afterwards? I, uh, hope everything goes well. Hope you have something to say?
Yeah, we're actually doing, are you recording too right now?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, we're trying to do a, we got, yeah, we got a school board meeting where I was speaking at online as well, so I don't know if we'll be able to do coffee after this.
Okay.
But I'd like to be in contact with us, we can't touch base, I really appreciate all the comments you've been leaving and your unique perspective on things.
Crap. Thought I had a card, I could, pretty good.
You have a lot of insight on to that.
I know this city very well.
Yeah, you do.
There's my contact info.
Where's the, uh...
Member emails will be on there.
What's unfortunate about this is they love the ACLU.
The ACLU of all people. You are speaking here today though, right?
If, yeah.
It's 7:00 PM, it's one of them starts.
Yep.
Okay.
So, uh...
I will sign us as well.
Are you?
Yes, I will. I didn't want to be the only speaker, but... Uh, which one?
That's the one, they're signing us up. And you're shocked there.
They, uh, they asked that you sign in, but they've so far always allowed people to speak without signing in. They do the, "Sign in once first?" So...
Oh, that, yeah.
Yes. George, how are ya?
Hi, George.
I mean, I would love to sit by you. How was your trip? Did you just live your best life? Tell me the best part. It was Scotland. Edinburgh.
Are you speaking about what, right?
Yeah, I'm speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got it.
They're, they're, they're the ones this year, they're brown. They are amazing. And I don't like normal more chocolate.
Mayor Pate?
Here.
Councilmember Shaveta?
Here.
Councilmember Coates Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Hand?
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Here.
Councilmember Lahey?
Here.
Councilmember Ryder?
Here.
Councilmember Silvers?
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Here.
Madam Clerk. The first item of this evening is public items, and members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. In accordance with governing body rules and procedure, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. I do have, at this point, we have a signup sheet that was out in the lobby. I have one individual currently on it, and we will have them come forward now. Mr. Crown? If you'd come forward to give your name, address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Billy Crown, 6633 Wed Street. I come before you today to raise a grave concern about the violation of our most fundamental liberties, our civil liberties, particularly the liberty of free speech and public assembly. Last week, a U.S. Navy veteran, someone who risked their very lives to preserve our civil liberties, was brazenly violated at our city's Public Community Center, a place meant to serve all people equally. The veteran, Dr. Justin Spees, has reserved a seat, had reserved a seat at that public event, but was unjustly denied entry by the organizing political group after they confirmed his reservation. Despite being told the room was at fire capacity, he documented others allowed inside while remaining in the hall as he was asked to do. His only offense, carrying a message that differed from the majority present. Not only was this a clear and undeniable viewpoint discrimination, but the room itself was beyond fire capacity supposedly, endangering 320 people inside according to the local newspaper. Yet, our community center staff did nothing to bring occupancy levels back down to safe levels. Hundreds of others were allowed into the meeting room and held signs with different messages, yet only Dr. Spees was excluded by force from our free public space that is the Tim Murphy Art Gallery. Tim Murphy, for those of you who are newer to council, was also a fellow veteran and dedicated public servant. He helped start the gallery to promote community expression, and I wonder what Tim would say today if he knew his gallery was used to silence dissenting views. What is even more alarming is that no community center staff intervened or attempted to mediate the situation before police were called. When police arrived, Dr. Spees reported a crime to them citing actual Kansas statute, but that was ignored. Instead, Dr. Spees was physically restrained, stripped of his property, and forcibly removed from the building. This happened here, this happened in our community in Marion, Kansas, less than 1,000 feet away from where we're sitting now. I'm shaking just thinking that that actually happened in our little city. This was not just an injustice against one man, it was a chilling reminder of what happens when we allow suppression of speech to go unchecked. If our public spaces can be used to silence dissent, then peaceful democracy itself is at risk. Free speech is not just for those who want, who you want to hear, it is for the, it is the liberty of all people, even those who challenge your views. Adding to the hypocrisy, the group that run of the room presents itself as a civil liberties organization, yet their actions directly undermine Americans' civil liberties. And what are the police officer in charge, Aaron Simmons? The very person who swore an oath to preserve our freedoms instead participated in the stripping of a man of his liberty for expressing an opposing message. I do not simply urge this council to investigate, I demand that this council take decisive action. The city must issue a formal policy to Dr. Spees, who is with us this evening, and those responsible, whether the community center staff or police, must be held to account. Policies must be enacted to prevent similar incidents to, in the future, ensuring that public spaces remain places where all voices can be heard without discrimination, exclusion, or indoctrination. Our liberties are only as strong as our willingness to defend them, even if we don't like what somebody else is saying. Today, I ask you, will you stand for fundamental liberties of all people? Or will you allow selective enforcement to silence those with dissenting messages? Thank you.
Mr. Crown? The, um, the fact that nobody else is currently signed up, I would call anybody that raised their hand, I'll call in. Okay, in the front. Please come forward, sir, give your name and address for the record.
I kind of need you to call me, sir. My name is Christopher H. I'm a resident of Marion, Kansas. I reside at 8600 West 60th Street on the east flank of Mount Ikea. I'm here tonight just to remind you that I'm a frequent volunteer to assist our city. I'm a member of the Board of Park and Recreation Advisors. I've served on several planning committees. Just recently resigned from the Public Art Committee because I have a lot of my own art activity going on. It's a great city to volunteer with because there's always something interesting happening. But I have to tell you, uh, it's really boring being on the park board. And I don't say that because what the park board does is uninteresting, it's because it's so well managed and so well organized. Everything is punctilious, the agendas are always carefully crafted, they're reviewed by everyone in advance. We show up, we're instructed, we're informed about city processes, and we're asked to contribute our civic perspective to the best of our ability, all under the careful management of the director of the Parks Department. We're fortunate to work with a director who has navigated this department through many tumultuous episodes and continues to operate with calm, equanimity, and joyfulness. As a community volunteer, it's my pleasure to serve my fellow citizens here with such a, with such capable staff partnership in contributing our energy and our points of view to the development of all the resources here in our community, such as the community center. I will offer as an aside, I don't think there is an individual, in my experience, who's under more scrutiny than our city council and our mayor, than the director of the Parks and Recreation Department, and who continues to show up to all of our meetings and all of our conversations with many community partners of all stripes, with a smile and with a hand held out in welcome and providing an opportunity for everyone to benefit from the resources that our city has to offer.
Mr. Reverend H. Appreciate your comments. Okay, sir, if you're here, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Justin Spees, and what Billy Crown just talked about there is an accurate summary of what happened. I'm the guy that he's talking about there, and I have the whole thing recorded, and it's available online as well to look at. And a couple of things I want to mention about that is, you know, when the, what ended up happening is the, um, the Parks and Rec Director of the Community Center there had me criminally trespassed for standing in that public hallway there in the community center, in that art gallery hallway. I had a message on, I had a message. And so the Marion Police showed up, and they didn't bother to investigate it whatsoever. They didn't come get my side of it, like I mentioned, I have the whole thing recorded. And matter of fact, on the body cam, one of the police officers even acknowledges that I'm recording. Of course, he mislabels me as some kind of auditor, but he acknowledges that I'm recording, and so that's what would be called evidence. So if you're going to investigate what really happened, if you'd want to get some evidence, but they never asked me my side of it, they just moved to criminally trespass me, and that's what they were wanting to do from the get-go, no matter what. And they said I tried to force my way into that room, it's a complete lie. They said I was agitated, a complete lie, you can go look at the video, 100% calm the entire time, didn't try to force anything, and so that's what makes this, uh, I was arrested, and that's what makes this arrest, arrest an unlawful arrest, is because that's a public building, and if you're not committing a crime in a public building, you can't just be trespassed in there for no reason whatsoever. So it's a violation of my First Amendment, freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, freedom of press, freedom to re-press grievances. Fourth Amendment violation for illegal search and seizure for an unlawful arrest, and the Fourteenth Amendment violation as well for unequal protection under the law. As mentioned by Billy Crown, not only were there signs inside the building, there were ACLU, or inside the public meeting room there. By the way, it wasn't a private event, it was a public event, advertised to the public. Not only were there signs in there for the ACLU, they also had tables outside in the hallway with their tablepost on with ACLU on it. So, the city of Marion allows one viewpoint into their public forums, the ACLU. Somebody else comes in with an opposing or a different viewpoint, they get arrested. They get criminally trespassed and arrested, so that's a Fourteenth Amendment violation as well. And then just for your police, just so you're aware of your police being incompetent, Sergeant Aaron Simmons there tried to tell me that that was a private business, and because it was private, I could be trespassed for no reason. And he wasn't open to reasoning whatsoever. I tried to explain to him, like, "What are you talking about? This is a public building, man, this is a, uh, this is a community center, this is the city's building." He's like, "No, it's a private building." And I tried to warn him, I said, "You know, if you, if you, if you arrest me, it's gonna be an unlawful arrest, you're gonna find yourselves a lawsuit." And he went back and forth, and said, "No, no, that's not gonna happen." And so, but like I just said, I laid out all those amendments there, First, Fourth, and Fourteenth Amendment. And just, uh, just for the ACLU, ACLU specifically said I couldn't go into their room because they said I was, quote, "protesting" and, quote, "had a sign." And so, just so everybody knows about that, protesting and not allowing protesting would be viewpoint discrimination as well. So if you're saying a protest can't be in your buildings, that's a viewpoint discrimination because, again, you're allowing one viewpoint, which is the ACLU, but, so let's admit it was all liberal agenda in there, it was all, uh, pro-abortion, pro, pro, um, or anti ICE, anti Doja, it was all pro-liberal. And so if somebody comes in with something different and you don't allow it, that's what's called viewpoint discrimination, and it's also unequal protection. How much time I got left here?
You have 45 seconds, sir.
45 seconds, alright, so I would encourage all you guys, go check out the video I posted, it all, I got the video footage, and I told that Officer Allen, when he cuffed me, that the handcuffs were too tight, and I told him that, in the car. And he argued with me and said it wasn't, so we had him, he rechecked them, and sure as shit, sure as shit, one of them was too tight by their own, by their own policy, and so he had to readjust that, and that left some, some marks there. So, the whole thing was completely unfortunate. This is America, has a public building and a public hallway, and if you're not committing a crime, you can't be criminally trespassed. I'm sure you're aware of that, you look like you're the chief or something, I'm sure you're aware of that. Their police chief, and I hope you guys are aware of it now as well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spees. Does anyone else would like to speak? Please come forward. Give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, all. My name's Rose Gerager, I live at 9931 West 56th Street. I have a couple of topics that I would like to bring to your attention. First of all, it's, it's hard to believe that on a day like today, that we had so much snow here recently. And when we moved here in 1999, so 25 years ago, we had the best snow removal in Johnson County. Everybody in Johnson County was amazed at how well Marion took care of the snow. I had a house full of kids who would have loved to snow down our very sloped, gently sloping street, but Public Works was there as soon as there were two snowflakes on the ground, and they were cleaning it off and cleaning it off. So my kids learned to sled down the backyard. But now, the situation is completely different. In these 25 years, now, Odom Park is doing a better job than Marion, and that's sad. I don't know if we have fewer trucks, fewer drivers, fewer plows. I would be interested to know, in the 25 years since we moved here, what is the census of trucks and drivers? As I was coming, or going to work and coming down Marion Drive on one of those really snowy mornings, the streets were still snow-covered, but I saw city plows in parking lots of properties that the city's just purchased on Marion Drive. I'm like, "Why are they plowing parking lots when the streets need to be cleared?" So that's infrastructure, that's public safety, that's like your number one job as a city, is to keep things safe. And so I would like to have somebody investigate, yeah, the census of plows and drivers 2000 to this year, 2025. Secondly, I attended that ACLU event. I was sent the initial invitation about a week before the event, and I saw that it was gonna be at the Blue Valley Library, and I'm like, "Uh, that's a long ways out there, 151st and Aniak." So I was like, "Nah, probably can't do that after work." Well, the day before the event, somehow it ended up in my inbox again, and it was here at the community center, I thought, "Psh, I can make that." So I made arrangements, and not, neither of the invitations included any RSVP to the ones that I received. So I did not RSVP for that event. Um, I know using the library spaces, that you have to have three conditions. It has to be free, it has to be a nonprofit, it has to be open to the public. So they moved it from the library, so figuring they would have a similar situation. Now, maybe they paid rent at the Marion Community Center, and in that case, it would be, you know, their event inside that room. But again, I never had a place where I could register to attend, so I just came and attended the event. It was a packed house, and there were people standing around the edges of the room, but I had no idea what was going on in the hallway until I saw the video that was provided several days later, and I thought, "My gosh, I was standing, sitting inside that room, listening to, you know, the regular rhetoric that you would expect, just wanted to find out what the ACLU was bringing to Marion and what kind of messages they had." It's really bad luck for Marion. When you see that video, it's, it's a bad look. It's a bad look for our community, the community center, which is a public building. I'm paying taxes for that thing to build it, maintain it, and have it staffed. So it was just really disturbing to find out that I had been at an event where somebody, a veteran, had been so egregiously treated by our public servants, and the community center staff that was getting involved were not helpful, to say the least. So I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. I did attend the event, and if we were worried about fire codes, we were well past that before the event even started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerager. Does anyone else would like to come forward this time? I see no one raising their hand, so we will close out the public items this evening, and we'll move on to the next item tonight, is the consent agenda. All items listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items as the council are so request, in which case that I may be removed from the consent agenda, except separately. But we have four items this evening, does any council member wish to have any item removed? Okay, I see nobody wanting to have anything removed, I haven't entertained a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to the council-approved consent agendas, agenda items number 1 through 4.
Okay, we have a motion, wait a second. Okay, Mrs. Shaveta?
Mr. Rose, second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Shaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Coates Meyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Hand?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the next item of this evening is the mayor's report. And we always like to talk a little bit about the things that occurred over the last two weeks, and I might have missed some people, so please just be aware of that, I did. But I attended a Zoom meeting with Johnson County, Wyandotte County mayors, who had surrendered issues from the 2026 FIFA committee, gave us an update on the plans they have been discussing. There are numerous subcommittees dealing with a variety of tasks, such as fire, police, EMS, transportation events, funding, et cetera. There's a lot more to be discussed. We still do not know which teams will be playing there, or how many are coming to the metro area, or how long they may be here. Would you know that there's gonna be a base camp for at least one team, and maybe as many as three teams, as were told? Okay, I attended the 64th Annual Metro Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Wartford Hall. Kathy Quinn was the emcee, Susie Rowan, ministry leader, Bible teacher and attorney, gave the inspirational address. She stopped classes for Bible study fellowship in Brazil and India, served as executive director, CEO of PSF for 12 years. She called on everyone to use her leadership to serve the communities in a unifying manner that's pleasing to God. Okay, I hosted the Northeast Mayor's election at Marion Grand Station Loss. One of the topics I included, the renewed attempt to take away the shiny, hidden mission in Fairway from the city and give it to a single tribe. This legislation is currently being proposed in the state legislature, and I would encourage people to reach out to legislators, encourage them to vote no on this. It's an important part of our local and Kansas history, and obviously should represent other tribes, and not just one. I am a council member, met with Mr. Engel to set an agenda. I attended a legislative town poll meeting at Sylvester Powell Community Center, our local state legislators spoke about current bills to be proposed at the state level, and evidently we're the midway portion of that, of the session. Johnson County Commissioners, Becky Bass also spoke about county issues that were occurring throughout. I, Lauren, you know, in Chosovia, and Chief McGlaughlin attended the Polar Plunge, which they like, it was, I wanted to jump in with the chief, I'll be back. But this annual event is a fundraiser for Special Olympics, and we were represented by Captain Jeremiah Waters, CSO Kevin Caldwell, CSO Lily and Schink, and facility superintendent Caleb Hunt. And our gratitude goes out to these individuals for braving the cold water for such a worthy cause. Donations are still being collected, I understand from the chief, if you want to go to the site there and make a donation and... Donations are still being collected. I understand from the chief, if you want to go to the site there and, and make a donation in, in Marion's honor or the R team's honor for Special Olympics. So, and that concludes the end of my report anyway. So do I have anything with the council administration? I'm sorry if I did. Well, let's just move right along then. Uh, next item up would be uh council items. And the first one is approve the twenty-six uh city council budget goals and objectives. And we've got the table.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Next item on the agenda is approval of your fiscal twenty-sixth city council budget goals and objectives. Every January, city staff solicits budget goals from the council as we start to assemble the following year's budget. So it's really kind of the kickoff for our budget process. So uh, we ask if there's any things related to the budget uh that we should be looking at, that we can bring back to council for potential inclusion in the budget. We don't necessarily need new things, as I've said before, because we kind of have a constant turning of goals and objectives. Uh, but we always welcome input from council and uh things that help you meet the priorities for you and your constituents. So this year, uh, the only thing we really heard back was uh, some greater focus needed to be placed on one of the existing items relating to city council ability to remotely attend meetings. I think it's under one point one, continue, review, revise, and enhance cities' communications to ensure relevancy, accessibility, and transparency. Uh, so uh, we will uh look at enhancing the AV capability in the city council chambers room so that we can uh better host meetings remotely, or, or folks can call in. But other than that, we did not receive any new goals. We have two new suggestive rewording of goals. The first one is uh the public transit item. We uh suggest that we update that just to say coordinate public transit. Coordinate public transit upgrades with the Johnson County Transit Strategic Plan. As you all are aware, we have money in the budget to create uh transit stops. Uh, we are, Johnson County is also in the process of updating or actually creating, I think maybe their first transit master plan. I believe the, the council member Lehe is on that uh board, on, on that body. Uh, so that as we get um a final version of that, we can start to implement those plans at whatever pace the council and Johnson County Transit think is appropriate. So we just wanted to reword, uh, reword that to tie those two things together. Other item is, we have a, an item on policies for economic development, updated CIV policy, tax increment, uh, tax increment financing policy. Uh, those policies are updated and have been approved. So we suggest that we just change that item to utilize the incentive toolbox to support redevelopment of key areas of the city. We feel like that carries forward the intent of having the policies. We certainly would be, uh, open to any suggested rewording of these items, but this is, with staff that's gonna carry forward as we put together the fiscal year twenty-six budget, present it back to council in a few months. I may answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Engel? Any questions, Mr. Engel? Okay, Mr. Silver, you explained it well enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for that. Can you say?
Mr. Mayor, I both move that the council approve the fiscal year twenty-six city council budget goals and objectives.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Shaveta.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is consider approval of a resolution setting the date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Public hearing. Director Dyer, so.
Okay, Mayor, council members, Brian Dyer, community, public director. See me have before you a resolution to consider establishing March third first as a public hearing to uh take comments and, take a comment on a expansion or of your TIP, uh, I thirty-five redevelopment district. Uh, the I thirty-five redevelopment district was established back in nineteen ninety-four. It's up here on the screen. It's up here on the screen. You see it's in the shaded area. It goes along the I thirty-five corridor from Seventy-Fifth Street up to Johnson Drive. Uh, the area that would be considered for expansion uh is in the red square there. Um, this redevelopment district was established back in nineteen ninety-four and the council and the city has amended it a number of times. Most recently being uh from twenty twenty, for the Marion Grand Station project. Within that TIP district plan that is attached to the resolution, um, there's also the establishment of a number of redevelopment projects there. So the TIP district plan has the high-level view of looking on how redevelopment should occur within the um I thirty-five redevelopment area. And then those actual project plans, those are the areas that's been specific. So if you recall, it's really a two-step process. Um, if we go through these redevelopment projects, it's first uh creation of a, a redevelopment district for the expansion, which is the case is, uh, that we would consider on the third first. And then the project plan is the next step. And also if you recall too, um, all of the timing and timeline is also established by state statutes. Follow that process. So zooming in here closer to the specific area that we're, um, that this resolution, excuse me, the proposed amendment to the redevelopment district. As you can see up here on the screen, you have Shamishin Parkway right here. You know, you have IKEA Way, Eevee on the left-hand side, and Antioch on the right-hand side. On what that you see here on the area right now, um, the red outline is the redevelopment district. And then within it here is, this is the Kmart side or the Marion Grand Station side. Obviously, they've done quite a bit of masquerade. And then across the street, you have the Shell Station and the Chipotle. And then over here, so all these areas are, are all within the redevelopment district. And then this area over here, the area that we, uh, that the event would consider is currently in the redevelopment district. Also, kind of, just remind everybody, I think we're all aware of it, that recently the city closed all properties that were owned by the Johnson County Library. Or those are the properties that are out in the green. Uh, again, um, for here, these properties are within the redevelopment district. These properties are currently out. Obviously, we all know Shamishin Parkway, high traffic area, a lot of exposure there. A lot of great redevelopments going on there right now. Marion Grand Station, we also have certain just big, uh, potential for redevelopment to grow on the north side of this area. And as we also familiar with redevelopment of the built environment, TIP requires a public private partnership, uh, uniform, TIP, increasing financing, other incentive along the line. So, um, bond council, uh, by Angela and I, the local staff, is also, um, they're all supporting recommending expanding the I thirty-five redevelopment district. Again, as, just zooming a little bit closer, this is the area here in the red box. So this is Slater, Shamishin Parkway, Antioch, and what's sixty-seven, Terrace. Kind of, the final, the final topic of this is to show the proposed uh re- redevelopment project plan area that's within the TIP district plan. And that would be the outline here in red. It's gonna be Project Area O. Project Area N to the south, that's Marion Grand Station. Project Area N is in Nancy. That is of the Chipotle. So Project Area O would be, uh, all in the north side around Chipotle, um, Project Area. Again, tonight, simply a resolution to consider establishing, uh, March thirty-first as the date for the public hearing to consider the amended TIP. She's gonna reconsider the amended I thirty-five redevelopment district. Um, and to kind of, again, uh, March thirty-first would be a special meeting, as I mentioned earlier, which you have timelines that you have to meet to keep this all going forward, um, to the anticipation of, of potential redevelopment of the area. So if that, have any other questions?
Any, or, or, Mr. Engel?
How long has the library been on that site?
Early fifties, I believe, fifty, fifty-six.
Ninety fifty-six.
So they have been, there's been no property tax collected from that area since the fifties?
That would be my understanding is.
Any other questions for Director Dyer?
Um, not really a question, but just sort of echoing, echoing the same statement. Um, just, I think this is a responsible use of TIP right here, because we're not removing very much, you know, area from the tax base, since most of it is already the library and it gives us a lot more flexibility to improve it and make it more equitable.
And those are obviously points that will, as we go through the process of, uh, of maybe, or considering the TIP district plan and then if it goes forward with the project, the process of establishing a project plan area O, more of those details will have to be available to council.
Any other questions, Director Dyer? Seeing there, Director Dyer, I would entertain a motion for a resolution. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution setting March thirty-first. Do we have to read that up? Let's be clear and safe. Okay. Setting, what did I say? Setting March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five as the date for a public hearing to consider adding area to the I thirty-five redevelopment district.
Do we have a motion? Have a second?
I second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, it looks like next item up is consider approval of a new work for electric, which is two generators. Director Dyer, that's for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this item includes purchase and installation of two generators. Uh, one at the community center and one at Public Works. Um, the generators will provide backup power for these facilities during power outages so that the city can provide essential functions and serve the community. Um, these generators are sized for unrestricted full power for forty-eight hours at peak demand load. On February fourteenth, um, we opened bids and we received them from five contractors. Um, we're recommending after reviewing the bids and talking to all the contractors, we're recommending going with Pro-Electrics bid in the amount of five hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, as you notice in the package, they are not the low bidder. And I have a number of reasons listed in the packet. And I'll go over those, um, the main points in general, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about them. Um, first of all, the low bidder, um, actually withdrew their bid based on the discovery of an incomplete equipment quote. The second low bidder, um, their completion time's a lot longer than Pro-Electrics. Um, they were, um, indicating that they would not get that, their generator completed until spring of twenty twenty-six. Whereas Pro-Electric could complete the generator installation by fall of twenty twenty-five. That way we'd have our generators in before the winter. Um, the other main item is that Pro-Electric, um, planned, would plan to complete this, um, project during, um, non-service hours so that they would minimize disruption to the community center. Whereas the second low bidder can, um, their plan was to have two forty-eight hour windows shut off with a temporary power outage. So those are the main reasons that we're recommending going with Pro-Electric. And I would be happy to answer any questions. Um, Caleb Hunt on the back row is our facility superintendent. You probably recognize him, but he'd be happy to answer any of the technical questions or design that you have as well.
Any questions for her company? I see no questions this time. Uh, I would entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a contract with the Pro-Electric for the purchase and installation of generators in the amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second? Judge?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like good. I just hope you, uh, direct company. That was both intentional.
Okay, so the next two items are actually related, um, to the Forty-Ninth Street project land acquisition. This first item is a resolution. Um, as you know, the Forty-Ninth Street project, we've been talking about it for a while. Um, it includes a two-inch wall overlay, replacement of curb and gutter, pavement markings, stormwater improvements, a new sidewalk on both sides of the street, and a bike lane on the south side of the street from Knox Avenue to Antioch Road. Um, the project has been heavily advertised. Um, it's been in our CIP for the last three years. And residents have been informed through multiple letters, social medias, newsletters, other meeting and on our monthly CIP. Um, the project, um, design has been completed and, uh, the utility companies are getting ready to relocate in advance of the project. And we're also in the land acquisition phase. So this project is a mile long from Switzer to Antioch, so we have a number of properties that we need to obtain easements from. Um, there are sixty-nine prop- properties affected. And of those sixty-nine, sixty-four are temporary construction easements. Those are primarily because when we're installing the sidewalk, we have to meet ADA requirements, so we need less than a two percent slope. So that requires us to go in and, um, re- regrade and install the driveway approaches. Um, some of the properties, because they're steeper, we have to take the driveways a lot farther back. But they are temporary construction easements, um, that will expire, um, within two years after the project. Um, the other five are permanent, um, easements, but they're very small slivers on corner properties, primarily for sidewalks or we're connecting to existing sidewalks. We just need a little bit more property. We have retained Oric and Burstein at the Right-Away Council, and Mr. Oric has been actively engaging in the project. And the staff has been talking to a number of property owners. And Mr. Oric has sent out two letters as well as, um, attending a recent public meeting so that he could, um, obtain easements from property owners. Per city policy, all residents that grant the city an easement are justly compensated based on the fair market value of the property. And as of February twenty-eighth, thirty-eight of the sixty-nine affected property owners have signed the necessary easements. Um, there are thirty-one property owners that have not yet signed. Um, to my knowledge, it's not that anybody's upset or against the project. At least I haven't heard that. Um, I think it's just a matter of a lack of response. Um, I know the mail system, like, we've been coming up checking the mail every day and it isn't always here, so I don't know if that's part of it. But we have sent out a number of letters, so I would assume that they've received those letters. We will continue to negotiate with the property owners in good faith, but in order to, um, access favorable bids and get the project done within the construction year, um, we need to move forward. Um, our Right-Away Council has recommended that we begin the condemnation process. And under that process, it's a multi-step process. So this first item would be the resolution, which, uh, declares the necessity for condemnation and directs a survey of the properties. Um, the second item, um, would be actually adopting the ordinance and, um, initiating and directing the city attorney to begin the eminent domain proceedings. What our plan would be is if this resident evolution and ordinance are approved tonight, we would send out another letter notifying residents, this is our last chance, we're getting ready to go to condemnation, and then we would file the petition in the court next week. Just because we filed a petition doesn't mean that we can't continue to negotiate. And if we file a petition and we continue to get easements, we'll just take those off the petition. So that's what we're hoping, um, that we can do that. Um, but we want to move forward so that we can get this project done. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Company? Go ahead, Mr. Shaveta.
Um, so if, uh, someone continues to not respond, whether it's just because they don't care or, or whatever, um, that condemnation won't negatively affect their compensation, um, at the end of the day, or?
So it depends. So the process is, once it goes to court, the judge, um, hires three independent, um, it's, uh, they assess the property. For some reason, the word is not coming to me right now, but they.
An appraisal?
Yes, thank you, sorry. Three of, three appraisers. And they look at the property and review the plans and they come up with a compensation. It could be more than we're offering, it could be less. So a lot of times it's less. So it's in the best interest of the property owner to move forward. But it just depends on what they come up with.
Okay. Um, and then so of the thirty-one that haven't responded, are they all of the temporary construction easements? Or are some of them, um, some of the, like, those corner lots?
Or are the permanent corner lots? The rest are temporarys. And we'll try to get out and knock on doors and we'll try to do everything we can so that we don't need to go, you know, through this process. But it gives us the, the ability to, you know, bid the project and. But it gives us the ability to, you know, bid the project and then forward on.
If I could, I just want to remind the council that we actually went through the same process with Fifty-Fifth Street. When we have big, long streets, especially the ones that are a mile from west border to east border, there's just so many properties. You've got people that are property owners that live out of state. You've got folks that sometimes just don't check their mail, and they're just not responsive to city reaching out to them. Again, it's a necessary evil sometimes for the public good, but we've, we will continue to make sure that we do our best to reach out to them.
Any other questions? Director Company? Is there a question? Okay, I entertain a motion. Mr. Silver's, go ahead.
Yes, since this is my board, I think I should make this motion.
Please do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve a resolution declaring the necessity in authorization, authorizing a survey and descriptions of land for the Forty-Ninth Street project from Switzer Road to Annie Oak Road.
Thank you. Would you like to turn your second? Madam Clerk?
Please, second, do I have a motion?
Madam Clerk, do we have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabada?
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay. Can I cover a little bit? You want to cover any more on this next item?
Just to add that this is the second step, where if you adopt the ordinance, that directs the city attorney to initiate an eminent domain proceedings. And we're requesting waiving the first reading.
Any questions for Director Company for, ask for a second motion?
I have a question on the appropriateness of waiving the first reading. I mean, this isn't a routine thing. We don't condemn things on a regular basis. So, in the spirit of transparency, do we have two weeks, and we let this sit out there for, and talk about it next time? There's a reason that we have both readings.
We don't need, I mean, it's the council's desire, we don't need to waive it. We were basing it on...
I agree, that's fine.
Yeah, but, but if that's the council's desire, we...
I mean, I, whenever we do these, waive the first reading, it always bothers me a little bit, but usually we do it on things that are routine. We do that every year when we allow electric sales and whatever. This isn't a routine thing, in my opinion.
Do you have additional questions that you want to ask or conversation?
And in my opinion, it is a routine kind of thing.
Go ahead, Ms. Shabada.
I was just, didn't we waive the first reading? We did it Fifty-Fifth Street, so I think we did it before, that's why.
I'm just like that. I mean, we've tried to reach out. I don't think, it may be that the city council meeting minutes, if two more weeks is going to change, if there are any property owners minds, or if it's going to be different than what we're trying to do.
Ms. Hens? Do we have a discussion on this item? So, um...
I, so I do have a question. So if we do move it, if we do waive, if we do, if, you know, if we don't waive the first reading and we have the second reading, and then the vote next, next meeting, that does or doesn't necessarily affect our project schedule?
It'll, I mean, it wins the next meeting, two more, three, two more weeks, so that'll just add in. It takes seventy-five days to get through the process, so it will get the start date a little bit later. And like I said, we're gonna, just because we filed, doesn't mean we're not going to continue to negotiate. In fact, I went to our mailbox and found another reason in the mailbox, so hopefully they just keep truckling it.
But, just, if, if we were to vote and approve item number five to consider approving, to condemn it, it doesn't automatically condemn it tonight. We still have to go through all the legal procedures that take up to seventy-five days.
Correct.
So we're just moving the process forward? Or, or...
No, I mean, even when you, so the actual condemnation and the taking doesn't occur until you get all the way into the process, you get the fair market value from the appraisers, and then the city can abandon the process at that point, time they decide, whatever the appraiser found the fair market value. The actual taking doesn't occur until we pay the money into court at least seventy-five days from now. This just gets the ball. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure Public Works will continue, and I know Mr. Oric, I've done projects with him, different, I mean, this fellow is on the natural, he will continue, he'll go knock on these people's doors, and he's pretty, he's pretty dedicated to run these people down and try and do and work out a hugely agreeable situation. So he will continue to do that throughout this process.
Ms. Shabada?
Sorry. So, so I'm a property owner, and I don't check my mail letter, but I do look at the city council meeting minutes, and I see that, you know, this passed tonight, that doesn't lock me out from still coming to you, and I rent my mailbox, seeing that I have a letter, and then...
Correct.
Going forward with the original process.
Correct.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion if we want to move forward. Ms. Hens?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary reading of an ordinance declaring the necessity in authorizing a survey and descriptions of land for the Forty-Ninth Street project from Switzer Road to Annie Oak Road.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Silver's?
I think I have it.
Madam Clerk, do we have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabada?
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
No.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Motion passes seven one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It looks like next item up would be now approving the ordinance. I would entertain a motion for that. Who would it be, Ms. Hens?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance declaring the necessity in authorizing a survey and descriptions of land for the Forty-Ninth Street project from Switzer Road to Annie Oak Road.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Go ahead, Ms. Hens.
Mr. Mayor, your second.
Madam Clerk, do we have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabada?
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It looks like next item up is staff items, general financial data report.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. So as I promised during the last report, you'll find with the report, a little memo that has some highlights and maybe any concerns that we might see. Unfortunately, this one is just the memo, the report is not attached with it. So very briefly, when we were doing the review of the report, I had some concerns with how we report our sales and use tax here. So as, I believe everyone's aware, sales and use ta, use tax takes about two months to get to us, so even though we received some in January and in February, that would actually be taxes for the months of November and the summer. So if we're doing good accounting, that means we're supposed to go in and book those to prior fiscal year. So we all start our fiscal year, January one year, but our report was showing the January and February revenues that we came in for this fiscal year. So I'm taking some time to really just deep dive into that report as a whole, and compare it with our peer cities, and kind of what the industry standard is based on, also just what works best for Merriam, you know, is it that we need to switch it over? Because it, it is a little alarming when you see a report that says zero dollars for a high level revenue like that, even if it's just for a month or two. So just kind of looking at what everyone else does, what we really need to be able to, and what we're allowed to do in Kansas, but taking this time to also really look at the entire report and see if there's any other updates or changes, or maybe any better accounting we could be doing. So next time of February, you will see a good completed report that all feel confident in saying, you know, we're good financial stewards, and we're balancing transparency with not causing the public any, maybe, unneeded alarm. So we did get in our sales and use tax, we're just looking at how we should report that. So the rest of some of the other highlights, our real property tax came in slightly above what we had budgeted. You'll see our first tranche came in at about fifty-five percent of what we had budgeted. We will get one more large deposit in about June, so bears cross, that one also comes in high, we'll have a little bit of extra money. Everything else is looking really great. Our expenditures are looking slightly under where we would expect them to be, which for the first month is great, because sometimes we open up large POs and encumbrances and those things, so. The only highlighted concern I have is just that our Johnson County Sales and Use and Public Safety Tax is currently under budget, but that is for fiscal year twenty-four. So it's not too much of an alarm, it's just something that we have to be mindful of as we're projecting for twenty-five. Nothing you can do about it for the last fiscal year, but we'll, we have one more month to come in for fiscal year twenty-four, and so it's just something that we'll look at all those together and make sure we're on track for twenty-five and adjust if we need to. So, but everything else is looking great, and well on track, and again, thank you for having some grace with me on that report. I promise the next time you get, it's going to be beautiful, perfect, amazing, but if you would like to see a tentative draft of January, happy to provide that as well. So it just will have zeros for sales and use tax, if that causes you concern. I can cross it out for the moment, but happy to answer any questions if you have any. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you for your transparency and thoughtfulness and thoroughness with that explanation we proceeded.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Any questions for Director Board?
Thank you.
Okay. The update. Next item up, the community development update. Director Baron, sort of voting.
Hey, Mayor, Council. Just a couple of quick things. Grant process, those folks are doing improvements this spring, some of you sitting towards David Eason, we talked to him about our sustainability steering programs, and a number of folks been coming in doing the property tax rebay program, we're going to franchise rebay program, so I can see folks coming in and getting some assistance from us, so that's fantastic. Just to let you know, each year, we have a community rating system, it's a system through FEMA, through our flood plan, that folks can get flood insurance, because it's a safe, just facing the program, it's a little bit of a five percent discount on the flood insurance. We started that back in twenty-twenty, it's been five years, so this year, we get a full review of that process, and we've been very busy gathering up all the documents for them as they were prepared for reviews on, 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 late, end of March. So, that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Baron?
You're just saying March for the CRS?
In March, but we, we have, every year, when we renew with all the documentation of this, we actually do an interview, I think.
Cool. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Silver's, go ahead.
The Mercedes building appears to be totally open, and they're doing business in there, so we can just wander through, or are they going to have a big party and grand opening?
I believe yes of both. Feel free to wander through. If you're interested, so, if you care, and I do believe they're also preparing for a larger event, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Baron? Did you have a, the date?
Yeah, there's going to be a ribbon cutting coming soon. There are a number of the Northeast Johnson County Timber, and so you'll see an invite coming real soon.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Baron? Or go ahead, Mr. Silver's.
The five-year review of the grant, that's just Johnson County making sure that we are distributing that money properly and noting it correctly.
No, the, the five-year review is actually through FEMA, i- is for the insurance program, so, to deepen the weeds, but all flood insurance is backed by the federal program, and we go through, so FEMA's kind of the beneficiary of that program. Folks can do, communities can do a variety of things to improve the discount that they get for their residents who participate in the flood insurance program, and so every year, so we've done all that, so we get essentially a five, option discount for residents who get flood insurance. So every year, we have to go through and recertify, then we do a variety of things. Every year, we do that, this is just a five-year moment in which they decide they need to come do a full review of the programs.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought it was a grant.
No, it is not. It is essentially a discount that folks give them every year.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Silver.
Sorry, Ryan. I mean, tell everyone you're open here.
Sorry. It's a little bit of a ribbon cutting.
Yeah. Can we get, can we go to brunch? Yeah, there's snacks.
Okay. I have a search, we're good. Next item up is the, she's the signal call update.
Good evening, we do have an update for you this evening, not just the same, we're waiting on it, update that I usually give. Bids did come in for our RFP, we got five responses from four companies. I believe you all have that information, is not something I'm going to go into detail tonight. We are going to discuss at the March twenty-fourth work session after the city council meeting. Please review all that information that you all have received. It is a lot of information, I believe it's over a hundred pages, so please make sure that you're prepared to have conversations. We did have a work group session today to discuss those initial bids. There are a number of follow-up questions from the work group, also from staff reviewing those bids, just knowing how to review bids and looking at what questions we need to ask, following up with those who did respond to the bids, trying to get those answers just for substantial amount of conversation that I believe we're going to have after we receive all those answers. So, again, more to come, but I believe on March twenty-fourth, we're going to have all the information that we need and be able to have a final conversation. This is the same timeline that you see for months now, no changes, we're still on the right track, we're still on the same schedule. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Silver? Next, John. All right, well, that, that takes us to informational items. We had the planning commission draft minutes and the public health committee minutes. We're in our packets. So, any other questions, concerns for those minutes?
I just have a comment. It was good to see that Commissioner McConnell is still continuing to reiterate the importance of safe crossings of Shenmishin Parkway, and hopefully now that the city has that library site in with the tip in place, we'll be able to do a little more than I'll make that, and I'd be happy to see it. I actually want some better evidence.
It's a lot of crossing. Soon to come. Okay, Ms. Gray, oh, sorry. Ms. Shabada?
I was just going to say the public art meeting was great, and, like, not Jason and I, but the committee has narrowed it down to three artists, and it's, I'm excited for what they are going to come up with, so.
Well, thank you guys for serving us.
Can you tell us where exactly the space is that you're looking at for?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So it's at the community center, so the interior stairwell of the parking structure, and then the exterior staircase, like, by the stop sign, where the ADA ramp comes down the hill, on the south side, yeah, south side of the site. So we're looking at, we asked the artists to give us a proposal for both of those spaces as part of their site-specific proposal. Can you summarize that correctly, Jason?
Yeah, I just, I think the only thing I would add is, it doesn't necessarily have to be the staircase, it could be the wall, that used wall.
That space.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions? Looking for a signal. Okay, Ms. Gray, do you have any other items from staff?
No, I'll just remind the council that we've had in the last two weeks since we've gone last time, two significant snow events, and publicly thank our Public Works Department and our Police Department for keeping everybody safe, and remind the council that according to our last resident satisfaction survey, the highest rated city service at ninety-five percent was snow removal.
Have any answering questions, Jen? Any questions for Ms. Gray? Okay. And I know there's your executive. And I know there's no executive session. Well, that takes us down to, uh, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Just say this.
Our move that we adjourned.
Go ahead, say it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to second that.
We have a motion, second, clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
May it adjourn.
This is a fun one. Thank you.
I have work to drive there, I'll be back tomorrow. I thought it was the R and B.
Great. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I did. What? Were you at the assembly office?
I was not at the assembly office. So, I, I, I.
I would have loved to be there.
Yeah.
I totally could have, I didn't have the disguise.
Well, I, so I saw the news, and then, yeah. And then, yeah, I saw the news, and then, yeah, the day was, uh, official, I mean, it was, yeah, it was like, I can't, um, actually, yeah. I was not gonna be a family, but I wanted to go, and it said that it was, um, a little party, yeah, like, like they had, like, they had a change location, and I was like, yeah. But then, I watched this video.
He's definitely embracing it. Looks like he's definitely embracing it.
I don't agree with him. I don't.
You're not alone in this city, in this part of the county.
Yeah. I mean, not that, he just, I mean, I fully, of course, right, he wasn't, he wasn't, he wasn't coming back, and not listening, not like.
Didn't he, didn't he raise a finger at anyone?
No, you don't have to raise a finger. It's his corner, he wasn't listening, he wasn't communicating, like, he wasn't having a conversation here, just remaining himself. Yeah. Enforcing. And it said, like, I'm gonna just walk in.
Other people did, though, you saw that, right?
Other people walked in?
You saw that in the video?
No, I was not really watching, I was listening.
So, here it is, and they told him, um, he could sit in the hall.
Were the people who walked in, not people who had already been in, checked in, and then left, like, to go back or come back or something?
That I don't know.
Yeah.
I suppose that could be possible, but being that they were overloaded, if somebody is leaving, they shouldn't come back. I checked the capacity in this room, so the staff said, the staff verbally said, um, but the website says a hundred and ninety.
Oh, really?
The newspaper said it's three hundred and twenty people.
Oh, wow.
So.
Was that in the room or in the, like, around?
When it's combined three rooms together, so there's like ratings for different styles of tea.
I mean, when the news said that, did it, did, were they piling the people who were outside and inside, like, every?
Uh-huh. Cited those numbers in conversation, because I heard some critics were, he said it, but many people went to the county, so, here, he's up against the wall, crossing the entry, and he remains silent for at least two minutes, like, timing, and then, um, down the hall, he sees people coming in the door, and turns the camera that way. And he goes out to see where they were telling you. Oh, there they are, see him heading in?
Yeah.
He's like, oh, what's this about, they're just giving in, so, I mean, other attendees were sitting in chairs, and that's not. So, he goes down there, I've, I've seen other stuff this guy has done, he's quick, he wanted to jump in there, but
Yeah.
he, he did not go in, I'm sure that's intentional, because he knows he was told, you're not going, and if you go in and you told the visitor not to go in, that's a clear violation. But, you know, he waited, this guy comes over and dickers and arguing, um, with other representatives. The other thing that struck me, particularly notable, is he wasn't going up to random people, he approached the representatives of the ACLU who were at, at a table, it should be like the, the receptionist or whatever.
Right, yeah.
So, like, he wasn't harassing other people, he, I really don't think he was harassing them, I think he was just agreeing with them, trying to have a conversation, well, listen, truth, which not so, very.
No, he wasn't trying to have a conversation.
They weren't listening. That's the society of working, it's gonna suck. But, but, he, he didn't, like, um, I paid attention, but he came and chased me, volume, I was like, he started walking. This guy, yeah, I've seen him, yeah, on another video.
Yeah.
I was.
But, but you're not gonna hear it, you're just repeating the same kind of thing over and over, like. Goes back in the corner, and it's like, hang out with your side.
I think it would have been totally appropriate to tell him, hey, there's tons of seating at this long way, there's at least twenty-five or thirty seats.
Right.
Sometimes there's free coffee around the corner.
Yeah.
I'm a goldie, I'm a flipper, I'm gonna upload my stuff from the web, buy it immediately, so I can get some people to go.
Yeah.
Um, I also wanna see if there's, I could put the signs on the wall, because I'm curious what it says.
Um, I'm pretty sure there are.
They're probably have.
Although, I don't know about those, when they find out.
Yeah. I looked up like the meeting rates, because like, they have three different seating styles, like, white, black, and the most dense, uh, there's like, there's different densities. Each space individually, or these two, or these two, or those three.
Yeah.
And all of those.
Based on different.
So, all those numbers are listed, and none of them came anywhere near the fifty.
Yeah.
So, even if there's only two fifty people, that's the fire code. And if, and if fire code's the reason he can't go in, and they're already far past it, they need to stop the event to get people out.
Yeah, that's fair.
I mean, it's just a matter of truth, or that, it was probably super packed, and personally, do I think that that room can handle more than two hundred people? Yes, obviously, right?
Yeah.
I am one to maybe put safety at like second or third, not necessarily first, but you have to, like, businesses have to be productive, you have to enjoy your life, safety can't be number one, right? But, you know, the fact is, they were citing fire occupancy as the reason they can't go in, we all know that a lot. I think we all, we, you would agree, that's not the reason why, but if they didn't like the sign, um.
Well, I mean, but if he's, I can't see him, but if he's also wearing, like, a tent on his, then he's gonna.
Like an A-frame or something?
Yeah, then.
They were, you know, like corrugated, it's like, uh, electrical lines, like what you would see like during a fire scene.
Right, on his body.
No, it's a hood.
Oh, so this is on his body?
No, it's like a camera.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know, I don't know, but, I mean, there's a difference between, like, being yourself and, uh, you know, and place in a room, and like, being, um, same. Like, if you're, you're now like more than yourself.
I, but you know, in the room, there's like a hundred some signs, you know that?
No, I haven't seen inside.
I would love to show you, I found photos from the journalist, um, from the, uh, oh, yeah, it's paper, but I mean, there's still signs, this is about the same.
I know, but, but.
His was horizontal.
Right, but if you have to rush, it's, it's, you know, you're, 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 you're.
When I say corr- corrugated, it's like, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming it's.
Yeah.
It's kind of a preference.
No, but it can concentrate, if there's not gonna concentrate, yeah.
I will think that, if, if you rub the corrugated plastic across your arm, you're likely to cut yourself. People can do it, too, it's just probably gonna be less dangerous.
For sure, yeah.
Okay, okay, but, there were plenty of people, somebody over here, they're like, fucking thing, and I didn't think it was, was, for Shenmishin, for, you know.
That's, um, talking.
That's, that's like a yard sign, I don't know if it has the signs, I don't think he has the signs, yeah.
Like, they would not let you reach the metal.
The yard sign.
Yeah.
I would, the yard sign, kind of excessive, but.
I mean, do you even know that's what it was?
I know where he was standing.
So, it's a yard sign.
You could see it in the video, but you could see it at some point, in the hallway. I don't like Sheriff, he was waiting for those two minutes. Bruce, uh, thank you for wanting to not skip the second reading, I appreciate it.
Okay, it's a big, it's, like, it's, yeah, it's hard. But it's not much bigger than the other signs.
It's not much bigger, you know, and like, the city has their own, like, tripod signs, their own, and these, they have that round contract, I hope it doesn't say it, it's a hallway. So, there were some batteries that were pushed.
There were some batteries.
He was not the only one, and what really gets me is, he never threatened violence on anyone, he never raised a finger, like, he never swore people that he can place.
I don't.
I heard him say damn or something today.
Yeah, I can see that, but.
Oh shit, or something, several, but, um, this is probably one of the calmest interactions I've seen of him, too, I mean, he's known in Lawrence. The library puts offensive shit down there, and people from there act against what they're promoting. Yeah. Bob? We've had better days, Bob.
We'll see what, and, uh, I've, I've, I've looked at his video, and I want to.
I'm not sure the body cam is relevant, other than to know what the staff told him, told the cop, because the whole thing was on this video that he already posted. Everything that, everything that Dustin did was on the video that he posted, before he even crossed the street, and until he was out, after the point he left the building, it's all on this video. All you're gonna see from the body cam is what was told to the officer, did somebody lie and say, he's been threatening us, or he has weapons, or, you know? I'd like to hear the call logs, somebody placed a call to summon police to that location, and what did they say?
Yeah, that's, but he wasn't arrested, I mean, that was, that was an extract, he was put in, he was put in handcuffs, he was in the building, he wasn't arrested. If anything, you can call it, uh, um, custodial arrest, but that's.
The Marion Prime map shows an arrest on that day for trespassing.
Really?
Yes, it does, there's a dot.
But he didn't, I, it was, it, then it was probably labeled a custodial arrest, which is just putting a person in handcuffs and removing them from the speed, like, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, they told him, you're going to jail, so you're going, so where are you taking him, we're taking him to Johnson County Adult, uh, Detention Center. And the video stopped before the car drove over, he was, he was in the back of a car. The police camera, the body cam, we have more.
I mean, but still, a custodial arrest and a, and a criminal arrest, it's not anything.
But, but both of them infringed the legal person, if I were to pull out a pair of handcuffs and put them on Amy, I would not go home tonight, right? That would be battery, and I would have a jail.
How'd the funeral go, I'm sorry, right?
Well, yes.
Oh, yes, thank you. So. The, the ability to restrain a person is not something police just have the power to do when they want.
Right, he could have, he could have.
He could have left? That's, that's true, but why should he act in a public building? It's our art gallery, it's free to the public.
Right, right.
And he was quiet, he was quiet until he saw people coming in the door.
Until, yes, until he saw somebody going in the door, and then he spent the next, like, seven to ten minutes arguing to no end.
He did argue, but a lot of that was pause, I, I timed it.
Yeah.
He waited for at least a minute with no words said.
At the beginning.
No, after the police were there, the police, they told the policeman about the Kansas statute that was violated, the competing, uh, invitee from a public meeting.
Right, right.
If I came here and they didn't let me in.
Was he invited?
He, he showed the email, the invite from the ACLU.
He, he, the R S P P.
Yes. It's at the beginning of the video.
You must be the twins. Like, we are, so they knew of us through reputation.
You guys got quite the reputation, too.
Yeah. The twins of Dave. Who, who said that?
All the people that have been around.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, it's easy, but, it was kind of sad, they were like, you must be the twins, and then I walked past our brother, and I'm like, hi, and then. It continued on, right? Yeah, like, that's Nick, that's, it's her. It was weird.
It was weird.
But it's, yeah, they didn't, they don't know.